Honorable Richard Steady, I hear it is there comes.
Hi, John. Hi, Sam. Are we ready, Bill?
You've been recorded.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, August twenty-third meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Act, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please remain standing for one minute? I want to keep in your thoughts and prayers today, Josephine Kokoros Morgan of Braintree, Mass., who passed away on August sixteenth. Josephine is the mother of Charles Kokoros, our mayor, current mayor of Braintree, and someone that we work with actually weekly. We were just on there last week to see the mayor. And fortunately, I was able to make it here this morning to represent the county. So keep in your thoughts, Josephine Kokoros Morgan. Thank you. I'm going to call the rule. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, I'm here, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Friend.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have three commissioners here. We have a corner. Number three minutes, the open session meeting of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number four minutes, the open session meeting of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, as amended, I believe we had some changes.
Right.
Are we ready to go?
I'm satisfied with the changes I wanted.
Go ahead.
You know what? I'll move approval.
Second.
Made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number five appointments, we have none. Number six, public comment. Each week we have on our agenda a set amount of time for public comments. Should anyone want to comment? Director Coronan, have you heard from anyone?
No, sir.
Anyone here today on Zoom land who would like to have any public comment? Number seven, old business. We have two items for old business. We have the review and approval of the new IT policy, which was presented a few weeks ago by Sam, and then we waited for a comment from different policy, uh, different, I'm sorry, different department. Have you had any comment?
We did. Sam can explain, but we did receive feedback from a number of different sources. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll call Sam up to give you an update on the latest version.
Ready to go. Sam.
Yes, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
One question, Mr. Chairman. So only a few minor changes. We made a change so that if a cellphone is lost, instead of having it reported to, excuse me, reported to HR, which was in the original version, we had that reported to the facilities department, which is the contact for the Verizon vendor anyway. So that was one minor change. We made a very slight change at the very end of the policy, which is about how the, this policy will be endorsed by employees. The wording has slightly changed there so that when a new employee comes on, they will be shown this policy and they will endorse the sign-off form as part of the onboarding process. Existing employees will endorse the policy, but a procedure that we haven't quite worked out yet. But we'll just make sure that everybody who's an existing employer will look at it and sign off. So we just changed the wording of that very last paragraph a little bit. We also added a section number three in there, which talks about how cybersecurity and security in general is handled in the county. So it's, I think there's only three paragraphs in that section, and it's all information I think you'll be familiar with. And it's a combination of saying what the county IT department has in place to protect the county and its networks and its data, and also an emphasis again on what employees are asked to do, which is be careful when you're on websites, be careful when you're on an email. Don't click on attachments. You don't know that sort of thing. And if you're using a computer, make sure that it's got virus protection, all that kind of stuff. I think that's the changes that we made.
We added the back area for security as well, cybersecurity.
Yep. So always it's as you saw it through the scope.
Any other questions? Sam?
Mr. Chairman.
Richard, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stady.
Thank you, sir. Great job, first of all. It looks great. I was reading some interest the other morning, the interview of and security password.
Yeah.
And I just have a question. Is that for the chair, of course. Is this the new recommendation now for people because of the hacking and AI and how hot it's getting? Don't use passwords, use passphrases? Is that what you're trying to emphasize there?
So in the IT password policy, that's a separate document that we're going to distribute.
Yeah.
We've mentioned that it might be better for people if they use a passphrase because we're upping the minimum length of the passwords. We're, right now is a little buried. Then you have to, going to have at least ten characters. You have to have a number and a symbol. And so it is often easier for people to do, as you've read, that sometimes you do use a passphrase instead. And when you use a passphrase, you can put spaces in it, which is also makes it harder for people to hack. And hackers now aren't just doing it themselves. They're using AI. So it's much easier for hackers to go through and start just brute forcing passwords. So where we put in a whole section, instead of password, I love ice cream or something like that, or, or I love ice cream might be a passphrase, although that's a little bit easy, instead of a password like Commonwealth or something like that, or Norfolk County seven. If you use a passphrase, it'll be easier for you to remember and harder for the hackers to get it. So that's in there.
That's thank you. Practical question then. When they say enter password and there must be ten characters, there's no penalty for doing it more.
Nope.
You can always do more, right? You could do fifteen, or like a phrase, you said. All right. That's good. That's good. Otherwise, great job.
No, thank you.
Looks good. Thank you.
So the, if you choose to approve this, we don't know when we're going to implement it yet, but very soon. Because we have to, the biggest thing I think that all the employees will have to get used to is that change in in password length and the fact that it's going, they're going to be required to change it every ninety days. So.
Well, it'd be clear, Sam, when the commissioners pass the policy, it's effective immediately. Elements thereof, you can manage, but there will be forthcoming information on that.
Absolutely. We will begin to implement. It's not, the passwords aren't going to affect tomorrow. Because we have to put that stuff in place. Like, the director's correct. It is in, it's, the policy is in effect. The implementation of, say, the passwords may take us another week, two weeks, something like that. But the, it is in effect.
Let me throw one more question at you.
Sure.
May I make this chairman?
Commissioner.
All right, a little tougher. So this is for you. Were you satisfied that it had sufficient input from all departments? Or at least allowed enough time for that input to be given?
I did not hear back from anyone asking for more time, although I can't remember exactly. I think I said, if you need more time, let me know. The comments we got back, I think were cogent. It's not the end all. This is not the end of it. Like, if, if we put it out and people start having questions, it is, it can be revisited.
Okay.
So if someone comes back, hey, I didn't talk about this. Hey, I'm having a lot of problems with this. Something new will happen. It always does in technology. So we will have a process to make changes and then bring them back for your approval.
Sounds good.
If there's a grammatical problem, for instance, I don't think we need to run grammatical changes by you. But anything substantive, I imagine we will bring back to you at a regular basis.
Okay, very good. So everything is under this umbrella.
Yeah, several, several, several documents with this. There's a password policy. There's a network request form. And there's a sign-off form. And the sign-off form is not just, I read it, okay, it has bullet points on the major pieces of this so that they, when they look at it again before they sign off, they're reminded of those, I think that's what, eight or nine bullet points?
Yes.
On the sign-off form.
The, the policy will also live on the county's internet where the other policies are starting to land. So it'll be available to all staff.
Okay. Any other questions while Sam is here?
Mr. Chairman, if it's in order, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. It pleads to move approval of the Norfolk County Information Technology Department Technology Telecommunications System Policy as presented to us in effect of this date, August twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Yeah.
Twenty-second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also under all business, nine, two thousand and twenty-four spending freeze. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Chairman Shea. Commissioners, in June, we were ending fiscal year under a spending freeze as a result of lower than anticipated revenue projections. We cautiously extended the spending freeze through to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to give the county a sense through its first quarter fiscal year twenty-four, an understanding of what our FY twenty-three close would look like, as well as what kind of trend the revenue collections might be presenting. I'm here this afternoon to request the commissioners and the spending freeze a month earlier. That is due in large part to a relatively healthy surplus close for FY twenty-three. The county is looking at a surplus of approximately two point six million dollars. You'll hear more about that surplus and its intended use for FY twenty-four in a couple of weeks as we prepare for the September advisory board meeting. This is not to say that the revenue collections for Norfolk County have resumed or have gained any momentum resembling prior year collections. They have not. The revenue continues to be laggard and a little slow. But throughout the fiscal year, we'll keep our eye on how those projections fare. And if needed, we will certainly revisit a spending, if not hiring freeze down the road, if circumstances dictate. You'll hear more from us on that. But for today, I've heard from a couple of different departments that they felt hamstrung by the spending freeze to accomplish some of their operational goals. Lifting it now will free them up to get ready for the fall, send some work outside. And I don't feel as though at this time it's worth having a spending freeze for another month. So who are you, Mr. Chairman? I would ask for the commissioners to lift the spending freeze effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Any comment, Commissioner?
No, sounds good. I'll make that motion. Lift the freeze effective this date.
Second.
Effective August thirty-first, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry?
Effective August thirty-first.
Effective August thirty-first. Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to vote to win the spending freeze effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-second. All in favor?
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Personal matters for consideration. One at the agricultural school and one at the registry. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. Move the following. It's a notice and address change at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. Address change to Lawrence Staples, Newtonville, Mass., effective eight eighteen twenty-three. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, it is a vote. At the registry.
Well, we have registry D's notice for vote promotion for Carolyn Busin Scotts, forgive me if I can't pronounce it, Foxborough, Mass., as principal clerk, replacing Lily Keenan. This will be effective eight twenty-eight twenty-three. The rate state is so moved.
Second.
She made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Payroll expense warrants for approval, number nine.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have several.
Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Who are you? I'll move the following for the warrant list of eight twenty-three twenty-three. First one is twenty-four dash seven payroll of the county, move the amount of hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred sixty dollars, six cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second one is twenty-four dash seven parentheses four point one payroll of the school, move the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars, fifty cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Also payroll of the school, twenty-four dash seven parentheses four, move the amount one hundred forty thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars, eighty-four cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next, we have twenty-four dash oh eight, Opera Town of Needham, the amount of three million dollars. So moved.
Second.
Who are you?
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, there will be more about it later.
And then the following last two are expenses for the county, oh eight oh four twenty-four, move the amount fifty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars, thirty-nine cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is.
Lastly, expense for the school, twenty-four dash oh two D, the amount seventeen thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars, seventy-eight cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye. That concludes the warrant list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Report on America Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, commissioners are asked to approve, consider, as Commissioner Stady just mentioned, the latest ARPA award. This case for the town of Needham. Needham has been frequently involved with our program over the last month or so. This award will almost completely exhaust their allotment. This three million dollar award is in advance for infrastructure water sewer needs. Briefly, the, the town has embraced the opportunity to fund various infrastructure, water infrastructure needs. In this case, it's designed in bid services for sewer lining associated with the one twenty-eight, the one twenty-eight sewer interceptor at I ninety-five. It plays a critical role in the operation of their sewer system. It's located on the town's eastern border. It's parallel to Interstate ninety-five flowing south between Kendrick Street and Great Plain Ave. It was installed in the nineteen fifties. It's an eighteen to twenty-four inch pipe and consists of vitrified clay and reinforced concrete. The sewer flows eventually discharges to the MWA Wellesley Extension. This, this particular project, let's see, three million dollars, excuse me, will be approximately three million dollars. The bid documents for the lining and the work are expected on October first. So this advanced award will enable the town of Needham to meet its financial obligations associated with this relatively large infrastructure projects. And as I mentioned, this will be pretty much the last award we see from Needham absent any last minute cleanup for a relatively small balance that remains in their allotment.
Okay, any comment on this awards of town in Needham?
That's second one we gave, what, over the month, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they came in recently. I think Mr. Buckley's working on a site visit.
Oh, that'd be good. That'd be great.
Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, it was one of the early, early birds and now we're they're pretty much exhausted. That's good. That's what it's for.
In addition to that particular item, if you want to, I can, I can go further to a couple of other items of interest. We had two communities that were one of the last, we had three communities that had not engaged or had been awarded money to date. Two of them are in the portal right now. That's Plainville and Avon. I expect you'll see their awards in the next week or two. And then it'll just be one community that has not received an award yet. And that's the town of Brookline. Brookline had put in a very large award, but it needed a lot of work. It was a premium pay grant for five million dollars. We've been trying to communicate with the town of Brookline to square away the challenge of putting forth the backup for that request. We have scheduled for September fifth Zoom with town manager to understand if they still intend to move forward on that and help them address some of the challenges, like I said, of grabbing a five million dollars worth of payroll associated with that request. So we're cleaning up some of the communities that have not enjoyed the program through an award yet. In the next couple of weeks, you will have likely community number twenty-six and twenty-seven in Brookline, hopefully right behind me. So that's my update for today.
That's great.
Okay. Any other questions? Number eleven, APRA award for approval is again, the federal list because it's the needed.
You just did have the word.
It was included in the line. Okay.
Right.
Number eleven, number twelve, bid openings at one thirty. We have none. Number thirteen, contractor awards. We have none. And number fourteen is fiscal year twenty-one audit for approval.
Commissioners may recall that Lynch Marini and Associates, the firm hired to conduct our FY twenty, FY twenty-one, FY twenty audit, have been busy over the last year plus putting together the county's F twenty-one audit. We are near the end of this process. I've begun to receive draft audit results from Lynch Marini. We extended a representation letter back to them earlier this week to help close out our end, and we are preparing our responses to the audit this week. My hope is to have this matter back before you, a week from today, for audit approval so that we can get along to our interested financial partners without any further delay. So at this time, I'd ask for number fourteen to be deferred until August thirtieth, Mr. Chairman.
Make the motion to defer it to August thirtieth. Second.
Motion made in second to defer the fiscal twenty-one audit for approval to August?
Thirty.
Thirtieth. All in favor?
Aye.
Number fifteen, July twenty twenty-three trial balance for approval. Continue packet. dated seven thirty-one. Any questions, comments?
What's the number, Peter? I'm always in trouble. I think it's.
The motion, according to the assistant town, excuse me, assistant county treasurers to accept the trial balance as presented.
Oh, okay.
We don't need to accept.
We don't need to have a certain number?
No.
Okay.
Because it's fluid.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I have no questions. I believe the number is eighty-three million, three, seven, eight, eight, two, four, oh, four.
Okay. Pretty hard to see it, but I did get it. All right. I'm like, what? I'll move acceptance of the trial balance as presented, and this is as of July thirty-one.
That's right.
Right this year.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to accept the trial balance as presented, dated seven thirty, thirty, thirty-one, twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you. Moving right along, sixteen. Review, review plan for county ARPA projects. Do you want to handle that?
No, we're going to be handling it personally.
Oh, that's the part. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to turn this portion of our meeting over to Director Cronin for a presentation relative to further plans for county ARPA projects. Continue packet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, commissioners. Mr. Buckley will be pulling up the slide deck for people to observe. Put together a brief PowerPoint for you to observe really where the county ARPA program has been and where it's going. I'd like to announce that exactly, two years ago, you folks met with the various communities in Norfolk County to launch the program. We did a PowerPoint that welcomed communities across Norfolk County into the notion of how you were going to build one hundred and thirty-seven million dollar federal grant program for their benefit, for the benefit of the citizens of Norfolk County. So here we are, two years later, and as we approach, dare I say, the backend of ARPA with eighteen months or so remaining for obligation period, I felt it was important to provide the commissioners with a snapshot, not just of where we've been, but where we are going. So to begin the PowerPoint presentation on slide two, I wanted to give the commissioners a brief history. Many of these bullets are reminiscent of this PowerPoint that was done two years ago, starting March tenth, with President Biden signing the American Rescue Plan Act. May tenth, the US Treasury launched the three hundred and fifty billion dollar Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Act. Norfolk County earnestly began its use of these funds on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with a message announcing the purpose areas of the recently signed law. May twenty-eighth, you sent a message to the cities and towns in Norfolk County announcing the total allocation of one hundred and thirty-seven million dollars in some of the funding options that would flow. July seventh was the message announcing the vote by this county commissioner group to accept the funds on behalf of the twenty-eight cities and towns. August eleventh, the Norfolk County Commissioners vote to authorize the hiring Clifton Larson Allen, Powers and Sullivan as the primary and secondary CPA firms. As I mentioned, a couple of weeks later, you held a meeting with the communities to launch the program. Since then, we've had first two tri-county meetings held in twenty twenty-one with your peers in the other counties. And that eventually led to quad meetings. And those meetings continue. In fact, we're meeting again with your peers on September sixth to discuss things, including ARPA and how the various counties are performing to date. As of last week, when this PowerPoint was began, begun, Norfolk County's awarded one hundred and one applications totaling eighty-six million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars to twenty-five communities. Norfolk County's administration support costs are totaling approximately one percent of the grant. The remaining two percent of the three percent set aside is to be used for the county ARPA projects. Next slide, Bill. So this slide will come up blank because I want you to feel the impact of some of the goals you set forth two years ago in August of twenty twenty-one. The first one was to provide a user-friendly portal to receive applications and turn around approvals and denials expediently. Bill, if you could enter, that'll show that particular one. The next one was to fortify the process with programmatic and legal compliance levels. That was basically the Mins Levin hire. And that was achieved early on. The third goal was to handle all reporting and compliance responsibilities to the US Treasury on behalf of the cities and towns. This particular goal was important. This was one of the biggest selling points about how county government can work efficiently and professionally, if you will, for the various county communities. The commissioners may recall that initially, communities were concerned. They didn't think that we were in the grant business. They could handle it themselves. In fact, all of the communities received something called NDU or non-entitlement unit money.
Right.
We have this, they said. We have our own auditors, they said. We can handle this. And we said, no, we understand that. We appreciate that, but we are going to do it according to the book. And Clifton Larson and Powers and Sullivan, along with Mins Levin and our peers in the other counties, really came together and put together not just a robust, but firm firewall or, or, or guardrails around how the grant can be used. Once the communities got used to it, they see the benefit now because those reports that are done are quite burdensome, very burdensome, in fact. They're handled by the senior accountant from Clifton Larson. He files them quarterly and annually as required with the US Treasury. And that's gone seamlessly. But that becomes the breadcrumb trail, the audit trail, if you will, of how this grant program has performed. So it's imperative that it's done right. And that's been wildly successful. The next one, Bill. Provide funding to Norfolk County cities and towns based on the two thousand and nineteen census. So it's old news now, but you elected to allocate funds according to those census numbers. Many of the communities understood this from the beginning. There was no infighting over who got what. They also understand that as we approach the end of the grant, likely this time next year or earlier, we'll be resetting what those allocations look like. Because some communities may have, may not have the bandwidth or the time to expend the funds. And we certainly don't want any to go back to the federal government without having the chance to reset and move them back to communities or, or programs that can accomplish the same and optimize the grant funds for the benefit of the county. So that's been successful. And then finally, we, we wanted to be a source of support and assistance to the cities and towns throughout the process. Mr. Buckley and I spend at least one day a week in its aggregate, supporting the cities and towns with questions. There are weekly calls that Mr. Buckley attends with our auditors to troubleshoot any communities that are having issues. Furthermore, you hired an ARPA coordinator, Mr. Bill Galvin, who's been instrumental, reaching out and doing a lot of field work. He's the one that's bringing that Brookline meeting to our attention on September fifth. So we feel as though with Joe Diaria's help, making the payments possible downstairs and handling all of the data necessary for the federal reporting requirements, that the county commission has put in place a solid team and a framework, not only to handle this grant, but as I recall remarking a couple of years ago, in some ways, the success of this program becomes but as I recall remarking a couple of years ago, in some ways, the success of this program becomes a model for how Norfolk County can parlay this connection and our and our collaboration with our communities into other regional service success stories. I don't think it's a, it would be a stretch to suggest that the recent Ways and Measures program that has recently started is 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 in some ways an outgrowth of our professional success managing this program. The community sees some benefit to the way you and your staff are handling this grant, and they see some confidence to work with us on other things. So I think the best is still yet to come. Regarding the big picture on slide four, Bill, so you'll see that the county total ARPA money was one hundred thirty-seven million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. The three percent set aside totals just over four million dollars. That leads one hundred and thirty-three million to be distributed to the cities and towns. To date, eighty-six point three million has been awarded. As of a half an hour ago, that could be eighty-nine. We're approaching that magic hundred million dollar. So we still have approximately forty-six, forty-three million dollars to go with, as I mentioned, just about eighteen months left to manage the money. There's a footnote here. I don't want this to go by because this was a flashpoint at one point. The ARPA funds included a ten million dollar revenue loss component. Early on, many of the cities and towns thought that they were going to have that benefit. The U.S. Treasury and its final rule clarified that, in fact, that benefit is for the entire twenty-eight cities and towns array. We had to separate and allocate that ten million according to the two thousand nineteen census to the disappointment of several communities. They they reluctantly understood what we were doing, but it was a difficult time. One thing I want to emphasize, Norfolk County, in our use of ARPA funds, which I mentioned is approximately four million, does not touch the revenue loss calculation. That entire benefit went to the cities and towns. Wasn't a lot of money, but we're not putting our foot into that water. It all went back to the cities and towns. Administratively, slide five, Bill. This, I know visually looks like a lot of numbers, so I'll try to be quick. This shows how the ARPA grant administrative costs have broken out over the last two years. Initially, joining with the other counties, we really got our bang for our buck. We split the cost of the development of the C L A portal, the Powers and Sullivan startup and the Mins startup with our other counties. You can see that the total cost would have been a half a million dollars. We paid a fraction of that. And those costs are some. That money's done. That got us up and running. So Norfolk County paid one hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars for those services back then, when it was only three counties engaged in the startup process. But since then, our annual costs, and these are the costs associated with running the program, the auditors working with our communities, working with county staff, have developed a fair, fair amount of expectation of how much it will roll out. When you conclude how much Clifton Larson, Powers and Sullivan, Mins Levin, the Norfolk County salary jumps, as well as the assistant coordinator's role, you can see that the county's total administrative costs will come in just above one million dollars or just under one percent. I can tell you, in my thirty years managing public grants, I've never seen administrative costs for a for a federal grant on that that low. You have peers in Bristol that I believe are charging ten percent of administrative costs, and I believe Plymouth is in the three percent range, actually more than three percent. So we're getting more money to the cities and towns as a result of low cost, highly efficient use of grant funds for the administrative purposes. Incidentally, the county is collecting interest as it holds the funds during the term, and currently we have approximately one point four million dollars. And at the end of the grant or towards the end of the grant, we will scoop that money, and it can be used for any general governmental purpose. Number six, so the county has engaged to date with some modest ARPA grants, including twenty thousand dollars for COVID test kits, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for the county premium pay benefit, and twenty-nine thousand for the Dedham Superior and Dedham District Court facility studies. Slide seven, Bill. But as the county has now distributed two-thirds of ARPA funds to the communities first approached, it must now plan for the use of the allocated funds so that proper obligation of these funds can be achieved before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The county engaged the trial court engineers in October of twenty twenty-two. In this office, Mr. Baghout and I welcome Mr. O'Brien and two or three other engineers from the trial courts for their input on how we could optimize ARPA funds for the benefit of county courthouses. The the skills of those engineers were very helpful, setting in motion our need to look at Dedham Superior Court for a full outside air HVAC overhaul. The Commissioners may be aware Dedham Superior Court is old. It's thirty years old. And during COVID, the only air circulation that they could cool that space in was split ductless systems, which are not preferred. They take recycled air and cool it. The engineers were envisioning an outside air circulation system, which would draw our outside air hundred percent, cool it heated efficiently, and treat that building as though it was built two years ago. Obviously, the study would have to come for the age of the infrastructure and the challenges to do so. We'll get to that in just a minute. And furthermore, the Dedham District Court was envisioned for a building management system. So now, as we look, here are, the study has been revealed, the study has been received, and the first study, as I mentioned, was Dedham Superior Court. The cost of putting that kind of an HVAC system into that building currently could reach as high as two point one million dollars. As this slide shows, the new ventilation system includes the equipment and ductwork, structural reinforcement of the roof, which is where this unit would reside, as well as architectural soffit modifications, patching and finishing. The study takes into account that when the building was first constructed, it used large wrought iron venting shafts to move hot air, which was presumably heated with coal or some other source to heat the building. Those shafts are still intact. They become raceways for conduit, wires, internet cables. This would use that those raceways to move some of the new air system improvements. It will be a challenge, and we do expect it will run into the millions of dollars. So it's an improvement that we think if we plan to stay in Dedham, just Superior Court is well worth the the undertaking. The second study was to determine if a building management system at Dedham District Court is feasible. Now, these building management systems are desktop systems. They run diagnostic control elements from a facility manager's office. They can help automate and optimize the use of HVAC systems by controlling the heating and cooling when needed, as well as signaling any system distress or failure. If you've got a unit that's down, the system pings you. It will send an alert to your phone, and you know very quickly whether or not something needs to be fixed. These building management systems are omnipotent in the facility management arena. We don't have this kind of a system. This particular quote includes some implementation in Dedham, which would also require upgrades to some of the HVAC, existing HVAC systems that are kind of aging out. So it's coupled with improving existing HVAC infrastructure and then applying the B M S diagnostic elements to it to make Dedham the host B M S location. The scope includes the opportunity to turn this into what I call a scale-up model. We do envision of using the B M S software in every other county building down the road. But we started with Dedham because it's closest to our facility management infrastructure and the people that will be supporting it. This particular cost would be up to eight hundred thousand dollars. So as we start to close in on this.
I'm sitting right behind you. Shouldn't it be next slide?
Yep, Bill, if you go to the next slide.
There we go.
That's your B M S.
That's the B, yeah, right. That's that.
Okay, now we'll accelerate to slide ten, Bill. Thank you. A draft county ARPA plan was shown to the Commissioners in May twenty twenty-three, when the F Y twenty-four capital budget was approved. This draft plan began to show proposed and estimated project costs against the available county budget of three million dollars. That plan included estimates of cost for two proposed studies, which we just discussed, and the plan also included proposed school projects that have since been prioritized and approved by the trustees last week. With these firm estimates now in hand from studies and school needs, the county's plan to utilize this three million dollars in ARPA funding has come into focus. Slide eleven, Bill. So this spreadsheet brings into one page what the county's ARPA plan ought to look like. We intend to use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the new restroom at the Wallaston Recreational Facility that we included on the course. There's a call-out box that shows you previously approved seventy-five thousand dollars in the F Y twenty-two capital plan to augment that total cost. The county Commissioner's Office, as I mentioned, will have spent a hundred and ninety-two thousand on non-school premium pay, twenty thousand for COVID test kits, twenty-nine thousand for the studies that were done by H B, which is discussed, and then finally, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety for proposed Alzheimer's Association program that helps that statewide, but more specifically in this application, county-specific promotional advertising material for their two upcoming fundraisers in Foxborough. The Treasurer's Office has advanced a financial literacy program narrative that would total eighty thousand dollars. As I mentioned, facilities would be building management system and two hundred thousand for various air upgrades at Stoughton District Court, Rantham District Court and Brookline District Court. Please note, there's a red call-out box. The estimated upper-end cost of the Dedham Superior Court HVAC of two point zero five million makes it eligible for reimbursement of costs through the trial courts. I believe that this project is too big. It would box out a lot of the smaller effective programs that were being proposed. By placing this into the Capital Improvement Fund, we can get the work done, get reimbursed by the state, put the money back into our capital fund for future needs and uses, but also have it as a side project that will be bid and approved and have a solid paper trail so that in the event, and I'll talk about this in a second, we see other ARPA funds floating around that need to be expended, we can move them towards this project because it'll be ripe for reimbursement. So we have some options if we keep this on the outside looking in until and if we need to do it.
So you're saying, don't put them, sorry, don't put that into the ARPA, put it outside, capital?
Correct.
Okay.
Because of its size.
Right, and the rest of these are going to be ARPA.
That's correct.
Okay.
And to conclude, last week, the trees looked at Kemp Hall HVAC improvements for units and controls, two hundred and fifty thousand, and premium pay at a hundred and nineteen thousand for school, eligible school staff. So overall, when you look at this total pay, payout, pay down, I should say, if it's approved by the Commissioners, we sit on approximately nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollar balance available for remaining county projects between now and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for obligation, some flexibility for another year. So this afternoon, Chairman Chad, through you, to the Commissioners, I would ask for consideration of two proposed motions. The first is to accept the proposed ARPA plan inclusive of two facility studies, plans to fund one, the Dedham District Court via ARPA, and one through Capital Improvements, and that would be the Dedham Superior Court. The second motion is to request the county director to prepare for auditor review the following ARPA projects with estimated costs. Now, these, this is not the full list that you saw on the previous list because they've, those have already been accounted for. You have not voted to have me create these programs and have them reviewed by Clifton Larson. So this motion would be to approve the Walson Recreational Facility restroom, estimated at two fifty, the Alzheimer's Association application at one twenty-seven, eight ninety, financial literacy program at eighty thousand, the Dedham District Court building management system at eight hundred thousand, miscellaneous air upgrades at Stoughton, Rantham and Brookline District Court at two hundred thousand, and the Kemp Hall HVAC upgrades, two hundred and fifty thousand, and then finally, the premium pay benefit for the school staff only at one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So I was, I was quite anxious and and really looking forward to giving you this plan today because I think not only does it show a really, really successful program that you put in place two years ago, but the work we've done to get to this point by putting the communities first. Those words resonate through my head as what they were said yesterday, and it places the county in a very good position to optimize funds for our facilities, our people, and really places us in a great situation going forward, some flexibility to maneuver over the next eighteen months. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions? Excellent presentation.
Great, great job. It's amazing when you think about how far we have really come collectively. This was just two years ago, right?
Mm-hmm.
It all started.
Yep.
And I remember the whole thing about, you know, step by step, we took it through. It was great to see that again. And we've done, I think, not to pat our own horn, but we've done a great job.
Yeah.
We have, and the towns are starting to be very positive as well. You know, they appreciate what we're doing.
Yeah, they're, I think they're accustomed to the, to the model.
It wasn't like that in the beginning.
No.
One of the people we mentioned earlier, he was very upset and, you know, different towns, they, there was a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of pushback, but it'll come a long way.
Glad you mentioned Braintree, Commissioner. I, I, I like to give credit where credit's due. The mayor had some serious concerns being in the dark, and I, I talked to him. He certainly, very honest with me during that phone call. I want to give a lot of credit to Sean McGoldrick, who was the senior accountant with Clifton Larson. He also happens to work with the Braintree Council, so they do professional work for them. He knows a lot of the stakeholders. He did an enormous amount of work collaborating with the stakeholders in Braintree, the mayor's office, the council, to help them navigate their own books, to use the county money effectively. There is a bit of a, you have to have a, a sense of knowledge of how the ARPA funds can, can really help your books. Sean did that for them, and he had their trust, and he's been instrumental in helping the mayor and us kind of put that back together and really see what the benefit, as you just mentioned, of what this program could do for a city, town like, like Braintree. But Sean did a great job.
Yeah.
Great job.
Any other questions? Any comments?
So you want a couple of motions?
Do you look at the motions?
Yeah, it really get us, for me to start cooking some applications your way.
All right, with that pleasure. I'll move the following, based upon this presentation and the materials for the so-called county ARPA plan, I move the following motion to accept the proposed ARPA plan inclusive of two facility studies and plans to fund one via the ARPA for the Dedham District Court and one via the county Capital Improvement Fund with possible ARPA offset of funding capacities available for spend down. So moved.
Second.
At Dedham Superior Court.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman, through you. Move to request the county director to prepare for the auditor review the following ARPA projects and estimated cost. Number one, Walston Recreational Facility restroom, an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Number two, Alzheimer's Association, the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars. Number three, the financial literacy program for the treasurer proposing eighty thousand dollars. Number four, the Dedham District Court, B M S, eight hundred thousand dollars. Number five, miscellaneous air upgrades for the Superior Court. All right?
Yes.
Okay, what's W D C?
Rantham.
Rantham, sorry, in Brookline, an amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Number five, Kemp Hall HVAC upgrades, the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And number seven, premium pay benefit for school staff, only the amount of a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So moved.
Thank you. Motion made second. Any other further comment, questions?
Great job.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Did a great job, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You have to save this and work off of it. Number sixteen, I believe, or seventeen. Number seventeen, twenty twenty-three Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, M O U for approval. Director Cronin, it's in the package.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Chairman, through the Commissioners, I want Mr. Buckley to weigh in on this annual application for sixty-four thousand, six ten, through which the county passes the use of these funds to the community shown within the M O U. Bill, if you'd like to add some color to this particular request?
Through Mr. Chair, as you know, every year, the county, through the Bureau of Justice Assistance's programs, is party to the Byrne Grant recipients for Norfolk County, named after a police officer who was killed in New York City in the line of duty. Uh named after a police officer who was killed in New York City in the line of duty. Uh unfortunately, these grants are for communities that meet certain thresholds of violent crime uh this year. Randolph, Waymouth, and Quincy are party to that in past years. Uh one or more of those communities has not been. Uh every year, the, the commission, because we do not have a law enforcement function in county government. Just signs on because of the way the federal grant is structured. So each year, the chair and the county director sign the, the document. And I believe this year. Waymouth is running point on the administration. They move it between Waymouth, Quincy, and Randolph for the administration of the grant. So we, we did this last year about this time, and it's just that time of year again. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about this uh grant?
Yeah, miss I could. Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, uh for you, of course. Is this a larger amount compared to last year? Yeah, I remember, I thought we gave a grant to the town of Randolph, and only Randolph, and it was for like fifteen or twenty thousand?
Through Mr. Chair, that was from the opioid settlements.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is a, this is a different federal grant.
Okay, all right.
We've gotten two on the opioid.
Yeah.
Second one went to the DEA for the.
Okay. Well, I thought there was, so something like, it wasn't opioid, it was, it was a grant, it was the Edward uh Edward Byrne grant. And you said Randolph had reached that threshold, but it was a smaller amount. Do you happen to recall?
Randolph will administer the grant for fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
Is that, might that be it?
No, that was just, I wonder how it's compared to last year. That's all. It's an annual thing.
Yes, it is.
Right. It just seemed like this is.
Unfortunately, the, the, the mechanism for how the money is distributed is by the violent crime statistics, so. They, they kind of go up and down and.
Yeah.
It's a good thing that they're getting the fun, but unfortunately, the reason for it is not great.
Okay. Okay. Need a motion to affect.
I think we do, yes.
Um I would move that the county of Norfolk. Entrance in a random understanding with the citizens, towns, the police departments, Quincy, Randolph, and Waymouth. Uh enter it into um. This day or it says.
Joinly apply for the two thousand twenty one uh JAG award.
Yeah.
With the proposed distribution of funds totaling sixty four thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
I will.
Carry forward that the town of Randolph will serve as the applicant fiscal agent and receive compensation the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. As proposed.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That concludes the Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant.
Are we signing anything on this?
Right. Number eighteen, request of Dedham Square Circle. For use of the county parking lot on annual trunk or treat event on Saturday, October twenty eighth. With the randy to the twenty ninth. I'm looking at a memo, um a letter addressed to seventeenth. Says, thank you very much for allowing Dedham Square Circle to hold their trunk and treat event. Last year, the event was a tremendous success. The Dedham Square Circle requests permission to again hold their eleventh annual trunk and treat event in our parking lot.
I'll, I'll make the motion, uh provided that we run it through the registry deeds, just make sure it's all right with them.
We should do. They, they, we had this last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Been done for eleven years since.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded to allow. The Dedham Square Circles, which is, I think, the merchants group here, to run their trunk and treat event. In the county parking lot behind the registry deeds. Uh we're gonna pass this to the register first, but.
Just one footnote, uh instead of a motion, just to add that the Dedham Square Circle folks have also. Uh offered to provide a certificate of liability insurance. I believe that came up last year, so that's part of the application as well. We just wanted to clear your. Your risk obligation, so, so, yeah, add that on. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Record of the county director.
Thank you. Uh commissioners, as you came in this afternoon, I'm sure you saw our newest hire, uh Maureen Lyden. Uh she's our HR specialist. Um Maureen joined us this past Monday. Um. She's a resident of Walpole and has extensive HR experience in the private sector. Um she joins us after um an extensive interview process. She interviewed quite well. It was competitive, I might add. Uh but we're excited to have her on board. Uh she backfills uh Marian Casano, who, as you know, left for another position in another jurisdiction. Um Maureen joins us at a relatively busy time. She knows this in her entry discussion with me. I told her about all the great things that are coming up over the next several months. We look forward to working with her and using her helpful skills to help us achieve uh some of the goals we have set forth. Um the commissioners may recall several months ago, I informed you that the department heads. Will be asked to endorse um and confirm their work schedules in writing. Uh one of the various human resource elements of the personnel files that were incomplete. Believe we have full compliance or near full compliance now with department heads confirming in writing what their work schedules are. And it is now part of the personnel file. Um on August fifteenth, I sent out an email to all the department heads, giving them. Brief, brief update um on some administrative things and for the commissioners. Uh information, they included a discussion um that I just provided relative to the draft ARPA plan. Um I think it was important that the department heads understand that this plan is their plan as well. They're going to be asked to implement and deploy a lot of resources to get done what you have just approved or set in motion. Um we also alerted the department heads that as COVID is again making a return to our midst, we ordered another batch of testing kits. Um and one of the first tasks, Maureen, just finished sending out um these test kits again to our various department heads. Uh to um enable department personnel, county personnel, this excludes the schools, by the way, not by. By any means um by design. Uh they have their own resources to provide to staff. If you do need anything, let us know, of course. But we're following suit with the previous two kit releases that we've done. Um incidentally, members can also redeem um eight kits over the counter at CVS or Walgreens. Just by showing your healthcare card, your Mayflower Healthcare uh Insurance Card. The, the program has been extended until December thirty first twenty twenty three by the Mayflower Health Group. So please take advantage of that if your family's in need of these COVID test kits. Um I alerted them that the spending freeze would likely be on the table today for early termination through your vote today that came to pass. So they'll be aware that they can start spending um non-discretionary items effective September first. And um I also alerted the department heads that we're moving ahead on our goal this summer. To release updated policies, um having previously approved the annual FY twenty four purchasing policy. Today, you took on. The IT policy and approve that. Uh right behind it will be the Personnel Handbook, which is um under uh phased review. And nearly ready to head over to uh Legal uh Labor Council. So the department heads were updated on that August fifteenth. Um received an email from Mr. McGowan and his staff um on Monday. Brief facility, very brief facility upgrades, updates. Um Rantham District Court had, um I guess you could call it a finding from the trial court. Um they found that there were too many um pipes within the holding areas, uh the lockups. Uh that could act as anchor points for um potential suicide acts. Um over the last several months, our plumber, our co- our carpenter and other staff have been busy rerouting and securing those uh anchor points. Um they are almost done finishing up the pipes and the carpenters heading to Rantham. Uh or this week to uh take measurements to close them in. So we're getting closer to cleaning out that. There, it was a very complex process. Um as many of those pipes were main heating um pipes for the whole building. Dedham District Court, um we've had chronic elevator issues over there. There are signs that the elevator may be at end of life. If it is, you could be looking at a substantial capital cost. More on that later. We're waiting for United Elevator to come back and give us a, a diagnosis on what to expect. Um I've asked the facilities folks. In the event we do enter a phase where they determine that the, the elevator to be beyond useful life, I want a second opinion from another vendor. Um but we won't delay trying to understand that as we approach the September thirteenth advisory board meeting. And then finally, Commissioner Shay will be happy to know that Mr. McGowan met on Friday with signed design over the new courthouse signage. Unfortunately, as you probably know, you're gonna have to wait twelve weeks for the granite posts to be delivered. Progress is being made on that. Um as I mentioned, September fifth, um Mr. Buckley and I will be joining. Mr. Galvin on a Zoom call with the town of Brookline to discuss their strategy for um their various ARPA grant interests. Um as FY twenty three has come to a close, I notify the registry deeds that as FY twenty four appropriation needs to be revisited. As we expected it would be. As a result of information in the trial balance from June. Uh the FY twenty four appropriation for the registry will be adjusted downward. I've asked for the registrar to respond to me. Um before September sixth on his plan for where um he would like the uh requisite reduction to occur. Um and then finally, speaking of policies, uh we have an internal control plan that Mr. Abraham has drafted. I've had various conversations with him on this. He um plans to have a call with me this afternoon at three o'clock. To discuss the final phase of the ICP. Warn that as soon as I see the product from him. That's all I have.
Anything else for the director? Okay, I have nothing. The twenty emergency topics that the chair did not originally anticipate. I don't have any, but if anyone has anything else for this meeting, now's the time to bring it up.
I had one, maybe, just on a personal note. I mean, it's not an emergency, it's not.
No.
But the last time, after our meeting, we went down and get some uh corn.
Yes.
Uh farm stand, and we took the long way back. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, I had not known it was there. I saw a small tribute to the late, great uh Commissioner Gillis.
Right.
And it got to my thinking about how it's just out there by itself. And I thought, why couldn't we think about and talk about, perhaps with Mr. uh Galvin? We have one for the late Mr. O'Brien, which is wonderful. Could we relocate Mr. Gillis's? And then we could have a little bit more of a, even a, something more proper to give me. That's, it was a very nice stone, but it's just there. It's like, there's no. Flags around it. It's just where the lawn is and, you know, I didn't even.
I mean, we can look at it. I, it was, the, I'm sure Peter and I were there. I know I was there. Peter, you were there.
I think there's a flagpole.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
The whole flagpole.
I didn't see it.
Regis O'Donnell knows a lot about it.
Okay, I didn't see it.
The particular day was.
We walked by.
It was very similar to Commissioner O'Brien.
I didn't see that. See, I just saw the stone and it was it. Caught me off guard. I'd like, like to give him his tribute. Maybe put it someplace where it could get some recognition, but if it's got an area cleaned up, then that's fine. Leave well enough alone.
I think you'll find the pole is dedicated to Commissioner.
All right.
Like Commissioner Gillis.
Just an idea.
And you'll notice that Commissioner O'Brien's family is keeping up that.
Yeah.
And she's changing flowers. I talked to Cindy a couple of times, and, and she mentioned that she was doing that, so it looks to her, kudos to her.
All right. Other than that, I have nothing. I am, I'm set. I'll make a motion on January two oh five if you want. Two oh five?
Yeah.
We are meeting here next week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pretty good meeting next week, and then we go on the road again.
Right.
To the Aggie School.
But next week is the.